Hi, good morning. Welcome to a special meeting of Hardin County Commissioners Court. All members of the court are present and this meeting is called to order. If they want to please rise for the invocation by Commissioner Roberts, followed by the Pledge of Believers.
Good gracious heavenly Father, thank you for all the many blessings you have given us. Lord, we pray for peace overseas in Ukraine. We pray for the people of Ukraine and we pray that that will all be resolved. In Jesus Christ's name we pray, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Commissioner. Well, we're here today for a workshop to receive information from Ms. Pam Wagner, Connected Nation Texas, regarding the ongoing broadband study being conducted in Hardin County as part of the Southeast Texas Regional Planning Commission Broadband Initiative. And of course, that study is also ongoing in Jefferson County and Orange County. So Ms. Wagner, if you'll come on up, good morning.
Good morning, good morning Commissioners. Thank you all for letting me come do this. I'm going to do a little bit of repeating, but I'm going to also try to just share some really specific information for Hardin County so you guys will know where you are in the broadband world. So, am I in charge?
Uh, let's see. I think I've got the quick, yeah. So just tell me when you want me to advance and I'll do it.
Go ahead, advance.
Alright.
Uh, just to remind you of who pays for this study, other than Southeast Texas Regional Planning Commission, and thank you Mr. Bob Dickinson for taking on the region and trying to make it better for all. He is using the funds from the EDA's CARES Act Recovery Assistance Program, and that's just a long way of saying that this program came about to help communities really recover from the pandemic the best they could. So moving on. Uh, this is just letting you know that the Governor also thinks that broadband is the essential tool that must be available to all Texans. He did say that during his State of the Texas speech. Uh, our mission at Connected Nation is just to improve the lives by providing innovative solutions that expand the access, adoption and use of broadband for all. We just really feel everybody belongs in a connected nation and we just didn't start feeling this way. We did celebrate our twentieth anniversary this year and we had a big celebration online about a four-hour podcast from all over the United States, really explaining to everybody what we do. So we were happy to be in the beginning and we're happy to see where it's at now because it's never been so well-funded as it is today. And those are just some of the things we do, network mapping, validation, analysis, a lot of residential and business technology research, and we can only do that when the participants participate in surveys. And I have to tell you, Hardin has done a wonderful job at that. Uh, we will update you constantly on the local, the state, national policies, and of course, what you're involved in right now is the Community Technology Plan. Go ahead. So what is broadband? Just so what are we talking about? There's two types of broadband. There's terrestrial, which is fixed broadband that you're using right now on your computers, and then there's mobile broadband. There's really a third broadband, which is satellite. We used to not talk a lot about it because there's a lot of problems with satellite, but Elon Musk is really working on that and it's getting better and better and there is a place for satellite broadband, especially in rural Texas where there may not be any access at all to any kind of fixed broadband. So we don't ever want to rule it out. We believe in all options. So go ahead. The next one is just giving you a update. When I talk about speed, you hear people talk about 10 megabits or 25 megabits or 1 gigabit. 25.3 is the standard that the FCC says is reliable fast broadband. So 25 megabits download, 3 megabits upload. You can see that is the middle one. Most of you guys in Hardin County really have the 10 megabits over 1 megabit. You can see it takes about 29 minutes to download anything. You can use one or two laptops on that. Uh, web surfing is okay for homes. We used to think that was pretty fast, but it really doesn't handle the applications that are today, which we, if you jump over to 25, which is what about 89% of you guys have, uh, you can see it takes about 11 minutes, so it's certainly much better. It's supposed to handle three to five laptops on this particular speed, but during the pandemic, we certainly learned that when there is a two, four-member household, two adults working from remotely and kids trying to get on the computer to work, do their schoolwork, that this, that speed is not near fast enough to handle all the applications that it needed to. So what most, that's fine, you leave it there. What most companies are going to, broadband companies, is the gigabit. That is as fast as you need. It's going to handle all you need. It takes about 11 seconds as opposed to 29 minutes to download something. It can handle probably 10 devices, uh, which is pretty average. Most, the average number of devices in a home in America is about six right now. If you think about it, you have your phone, you have your laptop, you probably have a printer. Some people still have fax. You have your Google Home and your Echo Homes that play music. You have your garage door on your remote. You're going to have at least six devices in your home. So you really need that kind of speed. At Connected Texas, we're not only worried about your access, which is actually the infrastructure, but there's three things in internet that we look at. We look at the access, which is the physical connection. We also look at the adoption, which is recognizing the value of broadband and subscribing, either at home, work or school. And we look at the use. So you can have access, but if you don't adopt it, if you're not subscribing for a subscription to a provider, it's really of no value to you. And if you do subscribe and you don't use it, it's still no value to you. So at Connected Nation Texas, we really look at all three of those things. That is something when you'll see on the survey that we're going to talk a lot about is, we can tell you where you're going to have access coming, but do you have your people adopting it? Are they safe on the internet? Do they have digital literacy skills? Those are the things we really worry about. Go ahead. So, uh, you guys probably already know and your community will know, but you guys were awarded about $7,805,000 in the ARDOF auction. That's the Rural Digital Opportunity Fund Award and this is what the FCC allocated. About $9.2 billion of this fund. It was a reverse auction system. So basically, the provider that came in and said, "We can cover this many houses or businesses for this little amount of money," won. So it was the most coverage, the least amount of money won. The problem that has come up with that, of course, is some of the companies that won these bids are not going to be able to make good on these bids because they don't have the infrastructure themselves to do it, the people to do it, the ability to do it. So it's, it's been a little bit of a process and several of rural counties have lost this particular reward because the company that received the money is not going to be able to do it. Luckily for you, one of your companies that did receive the reward was Charter. Once you received the reward, the providers had to go back to the FCC on something called a long form and prove that they could do it. Charter is the only company at this point that's been approved. And so Charter did get what, $7,400, oh, $7,500,000 of that total award. And so they are coming and I believe your judges actually will be meeting with them at the end of this week. I'll be there and to just talk about this. Now, uh, they're going to bring in, or they say they're going to bring in 4,457 new locations at that particular cost. It will cost you nothing. The FCC is going to, of course, give them that money as they go along. They do have several years to do it. Uh, they can do it in the next three years. They have to have, I think, show 40% and then two years after that, they have to show 60%. And then in eight years, they have to show why they haven't finished. Maybe you have new neighborhoods coming in and then they'll get some more extension to extend it. So just because they have all these locations does not mean your problem is solved in the next two or three years. It can be eight years down the line before they have to spend that money. So just, those are kind of questions that needs to be asked by the leadership when we see them. Uh, what is your plans? How much do you predict to have down in the next two to three years, et cetera, et cetera? That way, other providers that can come in and fill the gaps, other local providers, electric companies, there's all kinds of companies out there doing broadband now, really need to establish those relationships with everybody. The other company is LTD Broadband that's supposed to come in with 104 new locations. Um, I do not know where they stand with the FCC's loan application now. If you look at that map right there, you'll see that is Hardin County. That is one of the Connected Nations map. Uh, there is a difference between the light green and dark green. If it's in light green, that means it's probably coming from the FCC 477 forms, which are provider given forms to the FCC. It's perfectly legal. It's how they want it reported. But how it is reported is in census blocks. So if you have 100 homes in a census block and one of those homes have an internet connection, the entire census block is counted as having an internet connection. That's why many of our rural counties are heavily overstated. It's because, just because it's green doesn't really mean you have internet, but somebody, one person in that census block has internet. The dark green is more provider given information. Provider given information is much more reliable information. Uh, and although it is in census block too, it's much, uh, we do go by addresses so we can see, uh, definitely that's a much better presentation. You'll notice that your northwest part of the county is white. That means there is no reception, no access up in that area, as is in the northeast section. Just think of that, uh, that screen as we go to the next screen. This is our ARDOF screen. You'll see this, this is a picture of Hardin County. All those red diagonal lines are the census block that Charter or LTD says they're coming back in with new internet, new locations. You'll see it covers up a bunch of that area that has no internet connection today. So if access is on the way, it's really a matter of timing and when. Again, they are approved to go, so we know that it can do it. Uh, but you do see a lot of white still left in that, uh, that already has 25.3. You can only receive ARDOF funds if you were under 25.3. So if your area had 25.3, you're not supposed to receive those funds or use those funds in those areas. There is some overlap and the reason for that is these ARDOF funds were given back in 2020, these awards, when, and you might have only had 10.1 in that area, but since then it's now 25.3. We will see if they will make good and increase the speeds in those areas because they're coming in with gigabytes, uh, but they don't have to. So we'll have to see what, what they have to say about that because if they have 25.3 now, ARDOF funds are not supposed to be used to increase speed, which gives you the next problem, is that dark green area that had 25.3, that's all 25.3 coverage, at least this is 55, and I'll go through that in just a second. But if, uh, if you have 25.3 and you did not receive ARDOF funds, you may be stuck at 25.3 while everybody that didn't have it, that's getting new access, has the gigabit. Someone has to increase these speeds over here. Those are conversations again to have with the local providers and maybe Charter themselves. This green is the 50, I'm sorry, I don't have my glasses on, is the 50 over 5. And, uh, that's just the increased speed. The other map was 25.3. This is 50 over 5. You'll see there's less. You have 80%, almost 81% of your county with 50 over 5. We'll on to the next. This is 100 over 10. You have about 80%, a little less than you have only 55% of your county, leaving 4,050 homes unserviced at this speed. You at least, we, we do know applications today at least needs the 110. They just do, uh, to run the streaming, your movies, your Netflix, anything you want to do. You really at least need to have the 110 or you're going to have a lot of latency in there. You'll see that, uh, that there's light green and dark green on there, so you can take it for what it's worth. I mean, that's 477 information and the rest of that's provider information. Go ahead. Uh, just a quick fact here that we talked about access. This is also about adoption. In Hardin County, you have 90.6% of your people have computers in their home or businesses, but also in Hardin County, only 81% of those people have subscriptions to broadband. That's a big difference. Again, they have access, but they are not adopting broadband. The survey will ask those questions directly as to why. Is it expense? A lot of time we find in rural communities that is expensive. It's very expensive to have broadband and, and income just can't keep up with that. It, it could be a host of other reasons, but we'll be looking at the survey for that and that's something that of course we'll report back to you on and give you some ideas, suggestions on how to improve that and what to do. Uh, if you want to look at these maps and field validation, that's where you can go look at the maps. Uh, there's interactive maps there. You can play around with it. You can put your own address in there to see what providers are working at your own homes or businesses. Uh, you may say, "I don't have that service." And again, that would be because someone in that census block had that service. So you, you have to really read those maps, but there's a ton of information on there where, where all your towers are from the FCC, all your community anchor sites are also on there. Go ahead.
Can I ask a quick question?
Please, sir.
Uh, that last page had 81% of Hardin County residents having broadband. You've mentioned internet connection. You mentioned area. Uh, the question I have, that company that's going to do Charter, said they're going to provide over 4,000 new locations. What do they consider a new location? The internet connection itself or the area?
It's a new location where there is not access to at least 25.3. So they may have access to 10.1.
Well, they're not talking about an individual, uh, residence. They're talking about an area?
No, um, you know, that's a great question, but I'm sure it's an individual residence. It's not just an area because it's new locations.
So out of, out of 60,000 residents, we're gonna... Let me take that back. We don't have 60,000. Our population is close to 60,000. We're just going to provide, uh, 4,000, over 4,000 new locations.
They're going to provide 4,000 new connections and but...
Macy businesses are basically.
It is, yeah.
Us schools or government buildings?
And it's in those census blocks where, and if you look on the map, it will tell you in this census block, there's 500 residents, uh, 350 have an internet connection, 150 do not have an internet connection, uh, and Charter is, is going to supply 55 new connections in that census block. It'll break it down.
Alright, I'm trying to, to figure though, if we have 81% now according to this survey.
That 81 have a computer. Are you talking about that last slide?
Yeah, I was trying to... It was less, I mean, more that had computers, 90%.
Yeah, 90% have a computer, 81 subscribe.
So if 81% right now has broadband and this company's going to provide 4,000, that's not going to bring the percentage up very much is what I'm trying to get at, unless I'm reading it wrong.
Uh, I, I think you're reading it correct because it's part, it's locations and locations are not census blocks. So it is locations. I, I think you're reading it correct.
Are they supposed to be going after other money, like in the, uh, the infrastructure package that came out earlier last year?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. The Kellys will have access to, well, the state will have access to money.
And Charter will too, or other, other companies like that, is that right?
Oh, absolutely. And there's an ARDOF 2 coming.
Oh, okay.
There's an ARDOF 2 coming. Uh... There's, there's so much money in different programs coming. This was just the first. And it's been, and it, you know, it got off the ground in 2020.
So out of that 7.5 million that Charter was awarded in the first round, they're going to, uh, take care of about 4,500 new connections?
Yes, and I...
But they're going to be going after more money to add more connections?
Sure, sure. They'll go after more money, but this is new access. And so this is, you know, new infrastructure that's going to come in and that's, that's that 4 million cost.
One thing I was going to bring up is there's a lot of people that had, uh, good service before one of the storms that took it out and then, and then either Spectrum or whoever it was didn't come back in and reinstall that service. So that's a lot of the comments that I've seen on the surveys is that we had it and we lost it. Are we going to get it back and how soon? And that's one of the questions I plan to ask Charter when I meet with them. I'm sorry. I assume that the, uh, larger counties, for instance, Jefferson County, comparing to ours, their, their percentages of households that had broadband is a lot higher. Is that correct, Bob, or do you know?
They are. They're about 96, 97, yes.
Alright, that's all I have, thank you.
Yeah.
And they didn't get as much of money from that one, one of their RDOF money?
And a lot of theirs is over their, what they already have 25.3. So, you know, those are, those are questions for Charter. They're going to... I'll, um, I'm going to get that. Okay, great question though. I mean, that's, that's exactly how leadership should be thinking because there's still going to be a lot of gaps and all hoes and how do you fill that in? You fill it in through your local electric companies, through other broadband providers, other, uh, people coming in. Even though the map looks great that it's going to cover a lot of your area, the ARDOF money, it's a great questions to ask because you're still going to have gaps and we really want to cover those gaps the best we can.
And that's the reason for the survey, to find out where those gaps are, is that right?
Yes, yes, sir. Yes, sir. Okay. So what we're going to do for you is exactly what we just said. Uh, we're going to, you, really it's a... You know, we say we're going to do it to you, but always I say it's really up to the counties and to the participants of the survey of how well this gets, uh, how well we can do on this. Uh, you have had a great leader in your judge. He has gone out and done a ton of social media and talking about this. And, uh, you'll see your, your statistics in a minute. But you, we really like to have a leader in each of the nine sectors that we're surveying. You can see the sectors that we go, we're looking specifically at, which is government, education, and that includes higher ed and K through 12, chambers, libraries, community organizations, businesses, agriculture, healthcare. And we love excited residents who just want to be involved. We need all of those people that have leadership and have influence in those particular sectors to really come out and, and talk about this survey and lead this survey. And then once the survey is finished and complete, which we always, we don't talk about till it's too late, then what, then what? You have all this information, then what? Then you've got to have leadership. You either got to have to bring someone that does nothing but broadband and it can be a physician that sunset. It can be through the judge. It can be however you want it set up through a committee. But someone has to take that information and make it living and do something with it to make it worthwhile. It's one thing for us to do all the work and I present it back to you, but if it ends there, it ends there and we wasted a lot of time and a lot of money. So it's really about what to do with that information once it's compiled. So leaders need to share the survey. They need to share it with their community everywhere they go out about it. They need to really, uh, take it on, uh, talk about faster broadband for the community and what it can mean and how much better your life can be. And you go, "What do you mean by that?" Well, telemedicine is, is really the, the, one of many, many important things that's come out of this pandemic and internet. The fact that our senior citizens and those who need, live in a rural community and still talk to a doctor, maybe down in MD Anderson in Houston or something they need and they don't have to do that travel, but not necessarily, has been a huge, huge benefit. People moving in from other states and other areas wanting to get out of the big cities and have their kids raised in rural America are able to do that now because they can work remotely. They cannot come live in your counties if they do not have good internet. And it's going to be important for rural Texas, important for our survival, that we get new people back in and that our kids come back and live here. And they can only do that if they can work from here. So go ahead. That's my summary. This is what the survey looks like when you go, look into it. You can pick which, uh, sector you like. If you own a home, we want just one person in that household to, uh, take the survey, but you also may own a business. You may be a farmer. You may be the local librarian. You may be a policeman. So there's multiple surveys that you can take on here. It may not just be one. And you can see that is the link, the first one there for Hardin County. Uh, of course, it's posted everywhere, but it's posted there too. Go ahead. Uh, this is just how to launch a survey and we've already done that, of course. We started on February 2nd. We put it out on a bunch of social media sites. We gave a bunch of PR materials to help out. Uh, the judge took full advantage of that. Uh, out of Hardin County, we really need about 2,062 people to take the survey. We need about 83 businesses. We don't really put a number on the rest because the schools, we know how many schools there are. I think there was 23, 27, something like that. Uh, just one from each school is all we need. Uh, public safety, we, we try to count up the type of public safety entities you have and if we take 10%, sometimes that's just five. So we'd rather have all 10 that we can. Uh, but if, if we get the right households and the right business number, we normally, they ask a lot of questions that pertain to the other sectors and we, and we normally can do pretty good doing that. After we get all the survey results in, we tabulate, we analyze, we develop a series of recommended actions that I will come back and present to you if that's how the judge would like it. Or we can do it in a community meeting, uh, meaning anybody can come and I'll just present it to the crowd. We can do it any way you'd like to do it. And then we will also give you an interactive map that's just of Hardin County and we will also, uh, hot dot four of those questions off the survey so you can see where people have access, where they're happy with their service, where they're not happy with their service. That's great information for providers coming in knowing, "Hey, there's no access here. We have 100 people that say they will subscribe." That's what a provider wants to see because they are a private business and they'll go up there and they, and we can start communication about how to get access for those people. And then we'll do the plan presentation in early June. Go ahead. Once I get that map developed, once the survey's closed, it's about two weeks later for the map, I'm happy to do a Zoom or come back and show you how to use those maps because if you're really, if you understand those maps, you really can educate yourself and your community. And when you're talking to providers, you can go, "No, the map says this." So it's really important that you use those maps for, uh, for communication and education. This was just the timeline that was presented at February 2nd. We will close all surveys by April 6th. Uh, the fact that Hardin is pretty far along, I'm hoping to close that one first as early as we can. So you will be the first guys to get your information back and we can move from there. Uh, go ahead. This is the numbers to date. I'll have the new numbers today, but as of last week, you guys had 2,144 residential households take the survey. So you can see you've already met your numbers there. Uh, agriculture is, is low. Don't feel bad. It always is, but we, we certainly got to get those numbers up. Businesses is looking good. We're almost hitting our marks there. And I think the education community will come along. They're, they're, they usually take a few, a few weeks after the survey to start in. But you can see the other sectors. So if you have any leadership or influence in those sectors, please have those people fill out the survey. Again, I would love to close Hardin County up really early and, and get your numbers out to you. Go ahead. These are the providers currently in your, uh, county. You can see you have no fiber that we can see yet, uh, but you do have some fixed. You have some cables that have good speed and I'm sure you're all familiar with those people. If you're not, I'm happy to give you introductions to them. It's really important that you know your providers and you have relationships with them because if you have relationships with them, you can do some public-private partnerships with them. And you can say, "Hey, if you can build here, I can give you the rooftop off the library if it's high enough and you can do your fix here, but I need you to work with my underserved area over here." You can do, uh, contracts like that and, and shared information and shared access and shared infrastructure. And it really makes it cheaper for everybody at the end of the day. That is really the end of the presentation. Uh, I'm happy to take questions and I appreciate the judge giving me this time to do it. Uh, your county is looking good as far as participation and I think you're going to get some real valuable information from the survey.
I have a question. So you're with Connected Nation?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so what does y'all's company do?
Well, our company does just what we're doing right now. We've done it for the last 20 years. We are, the mission statement as it stated, we're just looking for everybody to be connected. We are not, uh, for one provider over another. We're agnostic when it comes to that. We're just whatever's the best way for a community to get connected. We do, we do a lot of work around the nations. This is just Texas. And we do a lot of rural work in Texas, but we also do, I believe we have the state of, the state of Michigan contract right now going and invite our other services other than this. This is called a connected engagement, but we have other services like mapping, uh, validation, where we will drive your, each of your roads and tell you exactly who's doing the providing there and what your speed is on that road and where you have access and where you don't. So that's called field validation. We will do your infrastructure validation. We will go around and map every piece of infrastructure you have that can be or will be used for, uh, any kind of broadband, uh, ax, uh, infrastructure to come in. We will do consulting with you if you want to do consulting. So all kind, any kind of service related to broadband.
And so what, what is your source of funding?
For what? This, this thing?
Yes, for what?
Well, at the very first, you saw that. The money came from the CARES Act, which came from Southeast Texas Regional Planning Division. None of it came from this county itself.
So there'll be a portion of the 7.4 million that y'all would turn off of, or no?
Oh, no. That has nothing to do with us. That's FCC down to the counties.
Okay.
No, so we don't receive any of that kind of money. None of that.
And what percentage of the CARES Act are y'all taking in order to do this program?
None. Whatever, uh, a county or...
I'm just trying to understand how you're getting your funding in order to do your research. The Planning Commission, Hardin.
The FCC.
Through y'all's budget. Yes, Bob Dickinson.
Yes.
Commissioner, uh, we received, uh, after the CARES Act, after the CARES Act was passed, we received funding like all the other economic development districts. So as we got into doing the project, we knew that broadband was very important to our region. So we set up a broadband advisory committee, uh, which the judge is chairman of that. So what I did, I worked with the Economic Development Administration Regional Office in Austin and I asked them if I could reprogram some of my money so we could hire somebody to do this survey in Jefferson, Orange and Hardin County. So they agreed to that. So we issued a request for proposal. I got two proposals in response to my RFP and Connected Nation by far had the most experience. So that's with our board, the executive committee agreed to allow us to engage to do this work. They've done the similar kind of survey. They'd already done it for Jasper County. They'd recently finished Newton County and they've done most of those other counties up in East Texas that were members of the Deep East Texas Council of Governments, although they were funded through a different source. So this was just a grant allocated to us and I think it's a very good thing that we utilize that funding for this.
Do we know how much money we've spent so far?
We... The total budget for this is $192,000 and I've only received one building from.
And that's just for Hardin County or for the region?
Yes, sir. But the good thing about this, each, each of the counties will get what they call the Technology Action Plan. After they do these surveys, they'll, they'll present, other words, every county's got different issues and needs. And so they'll tailor a program for each of our three counties when they get through with this. This is really a real aggressive timeline to do this.
Yeah.
Normally, there's certainly times usually, Pam, how many more months?
At least another month. We'll do nine again.
So because, see, I have to be through with this project by the middle of June because my grant ends June 30th. So that was another reason. It was a good project, a timely project and they stated that they can get it done and I think they will.
And so the original funding though comes from the CARES Act?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Alright, thank you.
Yes, and you, and you mentioned the other funding, uh, Texas Rural Funders funded all the other East Texas projects. So none of the counties themselves paid us. We haven't accepted any of that.
Right, there's just a lot of questions about the CARES Act and people that are competing for it. So that's why I asked my question.
Yes, sir. Uh, we don't... Yes, sir. Uh, we don't get the CARES Act money. We, we have to, we go through whoever hires us.
Right, but the people that hired you is using the CARES fund.
Sure, sure. Understand. Thank you for the question.
Any other questions or comments?
Uh, Mr. Roberts.
Yeah, just real quick. I think I missed one on the survey targets. That's retiring person.
That's the jealousy target.
I just want to add that, uh, Sonia at the Silby Chamber of Commerce has done an excellent job in getting people engaged. So have Katie and Tammy over at the Abre Life Extension Office. So I know that, uh, Pam and Bob had kind of commended me and I just want to make sure that I, I haven't done it by myself. I've had a lot of help from, uh, Tammy, Katie and Sonia. So wanted to pass that on.
And thank you for saying that, uh, everybody in Harden County, especially when I send out your survey results every week, I, I get a message from a lot of them saying, "We did this, this week, this, this, the week." And they're, they're really engaged in that. And I think you're going to see the result. So the expectations of the technology plan will be truly a reflection of what's going on in Harden County. And really what I want to do with that is show you where you are today and the questions you need to ask with the services coming in from the providers like Charter and LTD. Because they, if the money is used right, even though, uh, what Commissioner Cooper said, uh, needs to be understood, it really can make a difference, uh, in, in this county and where we go and how other providers can come in. So.
Sounds good.
This is not my computer. I'm still your computer. I'm sorry.
All right. We'll adjourn this meeting if that's all right. Anybody want to make that motion?
Move to adjourn.
So. That motion by Commissioner Cooper, seconded by Commissioner Roberts to adjourn the special meeting. We'll move right on into the regular meeting. Can you stop there before?